Is the PowerPoint in PowerPoint mode? Can you see the PowerPoint, Dr. Palmer?
It's in presenter mode.
Interesting.
Ex- that mode? Go to the bottom right-hand corner.
There's nothing on the bottom right-hand corner here.
Okay, well, we're good with this mode then. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Almost good evening. I hope everyone out there is staying safe and are getting ready to return this fall, which is the topic of this occasion. We're going to take the next hour to delve into a conversation that actually is one way for the most part. But a conversation nevertheless that allows us to give you some background on the preparations that we're making for your return this coming fall. Our panelists today are going to be your provost and senior vice president for academic affairs, Dr. James Palmer, your vice president for enrollment management, Dr. Serena Willis, and myself, vice president for student affairs, M. Samms, Dr. Tim Samms. So just a little background about the nature of this presentation. As you've already discovered, we cannot see your wonderful faces. We can't see how eager you are and excited you are to be back here. We can't see how amazed you are to see the fountain once again and to look at our beautiful campus. And the reason we're doing that, one is to avoid being photobombed like the last occasion we got together. But secondly, so that we'll have an opportunity to move through the presentation. However, we are prepared to answer all of your questions that you present to us. All you have to do to ask a question is to go to the Q and A section of your Zoom platform, put in your questions, and we have about seventeen or eighteen experts in the background prepared to answer every one of your questions. If we get stumped on a question, they will send it to us and we will probably mention to you that we will address it within the next week for you. But we are prepared to answer scores of your questions today. So please, as your questions arise, feel free to ask them in the Q and A section, excuse me, in the Q and A section, and someone will get to it fairly quickly. If there seems or appears to be a theme, a good number of similar type questions, we have a person who is ready to identify those themes and who will be sending them to us. Us being Dr. Palmer, Dr. Willis, and myself. We will address those questions at the end of the presentation. Okay? And so just a couple of other housekeeping items. The recording from today's session will be placed on our website. So anyone who has missed it, and if anyone shares with you that they're disappointed that they missed it, they can go to our website and pick up the recording so they can see it. The other item I want to speak to is I just want to make a simple reminder to all of you to make sure you sign up for the census and make sure you sign up to vote for this fall. Vote in this fall, okay? So without further ado, let me give you a little bit of the context. And I'm going to turn the microphone over thereafter to Dr. Palmer. We're going to go through the following five topics today. They're all based upon information or guidance that we receive from the CDC, from TANIS, our system that we are part of, and our university or your beloved university. We're going to talk a little bit about the academic experience in terms of what you can expect this upcoming year. We're going to talk about some of the changes within the student experience. We're going to then follow with a discussion about the residential experience, talk some about conduct, some training for students that corresponds with preparing for the fall, and then we're going to talk about some of the safety efforts that we're making for this fall. Just want to remind you, I'm going to skip down in this list to our residential experience. We expect to have about fifty-five hundred residents. That means that Phase Nine will be coming online this year. And if you look there, you can see that we are already broadcasting or projecting that there will be a limited visitation policy, physical distancing expected, expecting that you will remain on campus for those who are on in the residential experience, and we will also provide cleaning protocols. Okay, I just wanted to highlight that before I turn it over to Dr. Palmer. So without further ado, I present to you, to everyone, once again, Dr. Palmer, your vice president, your senior vice president for academic affairs and your provost. Thanks, Dr. Palmer.
Thank you, Dr. Samms. Do you want to advance that slide?
I sure will.
It has not advanced yet. Or at least on my screen.
It's advanced on my screen. Let me see where it's at. Is it there?
That's better. We want to talk a little bit about the experience that you might see when you come back in the fall semester. Of course, we're getting prepared for your return. We want things to be incredibly safe for everyone. That includes faculty and staff. And so what you'll see is some rearranged classrooms, rearranged labs, including offices to accommodate and to make sure that we're following CDC guidelines. We are going to ensure that we take out furniture as well to make sure that there is no question about the social distancing, so we can't necessarily put more chairs into a space than has already been walked and allocated in terms of number of spaces that would be safe and secure for us to teach and to work in. We will, in fact, be reducing and redirecting accessibility to the classrooms. So you may actually see buildings where you can enter one entrance and exit out of another, but you can't go in and out of the same entrance. And so those will be clearly marked. You'll have monitoring in the hallways so that we make sure that between classes, people are not congregating and we can get students back into the classrooms after some cleaning has been done. And so you might actually find that between classes were anywhere between fifteen and thirty minutes so that we can have sufficient time to get students and faculty to their next class and to do some cleaning as a result. So you may find that, in fact, during the day, there might be a full hour where there are no classes whatsoever. So we can get inside of the classrooms across campus and do some deep cleaning throughout the day as well. We will find that faculty are encouraged to start recording their lectures and to actually place them on e-courses so that you have access to them. If you cannot make a class for whatever reason, that those resources are available to you. And we are undergoing a great deal of training for faculty as we speak this summer to ensure that we're ready to make that happen. We will also be encouraging students to interact with faculty virtually, but as well, we'll make sure that there's a way to have appointments in the face-to-face environment. But a lot of the interaction that we'll have this fall will, in fact, be virtual. We will have faculty office hours on several different days, so it won't just simply be, I'm only available on Monday, but we're going to make sure that they are available on more than one day as well. You can also expect to have some rotations in place. We're going to have some classes where maybe traditionally we have fifty people in a classroom. There might be some situations where only thirty-five can be accommodated in a particular location. So we may divide a class and actually have kind of a hybrid rotation of sorts where, in fact, there are, you know, a set of students coming in on a Monday and those rotate and are virtual the next day, and a second set of students come in the following day in a hybrid model. Dr. Samms, the next slide. Okay, so some questions may come up about what is going to be there to support me and my academic experiences. We will have increased graduate student support in some areas. Every college has been allocated additional graduate students to help with things like social distancing, help with online course monitoring. In fact, there might be some cases where they are helping with videoing of recording of lectures and subsequently posting those into e-courses. You may find that you have some new or additional instructors that you haven't seen before. We're trying to hire as we speak this summer to make sure that we can take some of those larger classrooms and divide them. And so some additional instructors are being hired at this time. Some questions have come up quite frequently about whether that pass fail or pass no pass option will be continued. And in fact, that will be continued through the fall semester, just like we did this summer. Some additional support for those who need computer access. We have purchased six laptop kiosks. And so we'll have a hundred and eighty computers available for student checkout across campus with your ID card. And so those will be available on an ad needed, as needed basis. We've also purchased and secured additional Chromebooks for long-term checkout. So if the kiosk is not an option for you for a couple of hours of access to a computer, we actually have computers for checkout as well. We are extending virtual desktop support so that we have software that you might need access to virtually. And that can be helpful if you're in a remote location but need specialized software in architecture or engineering, for example. And as many of you know, we have a new e-courses. It's a platform that's supported by Canvas. And we believe that this is going to be a much, much easier e-courses experience for students and faculty. And Zoom is already integrated into that particular platform. We'll have expanded video recording so that we can actually make sure that we're streaming in a hundred and fifty classrooms across campus. And we've actually purchased carts for faculty so that in case they need to go to a new location, they would have access to a cart that could be pushed to a remote location as needed. And we're working to take attendance virtually or electronically. And this is going to help not only the faculty and students, but also with contact tracing if that is needed. So more on that will come as we get closer to implementation on it. Of course, online and face-to-face tutoring will continue as we did in the spring semester and the summer as well. And of course, I mentioned that we will have faculty office hours on different days, so it's not just one option available to students at any given time. Dr. Samms, you want to go to the next slide? And Dr. Phillips, if you want to discuss the definitions of some of these terms that will be important as we move forward, please do so.
Um, so we wanted to make sure that you understood as you look at your schedule what the different course types are that we'll be offering this fall. Of course, we will have our traditional face-to-face, which is where the instructor and students are going to be in the classroom. The second is online, which is what we are this summer, but there are two versions of online. One is synchronous, and that is when your course is online, but you and your instructor will be online at a set time and day each week. And then the second type of online course that we'll be offering is the traditional asynchronous, which is where your course will be built out online, but you are not required to be online at a specific time that would be the same as your instructor. The third, the last type of course is hybrid, and that is where a portion of your course, you would be in class face-to-face with your instructor, and a portion of your course would be online. Most often, it is asynchronous. At Prairie View, we keep that percentage at a minimum of fifty-one percent of that class would be face-to-face and a maximum of forty-nine percent of those hybrid courses would be online. As far as the fees go for courses, we already have a fee structure set up that we will continue. And so if you're in, if all of your courses are online, you would not be required to pay the student health fee, the student center complex fee, the recreational fee, or the athletic fee. If you are in any combination or other classes, you would still be responsible for paying your normal tuition fees based on the cohort that you are in.
Dr. Willis, let me also share that there are some questions about whether there's enough or there's available online course options for students. At this point, I believe we have at least fifty percent of our coursework online. So it is possible to craft a full online course option for students. Dr. Samms?
I'm trying to change the slide. It won't move. Okay. Let's talk for a few moments about how your student experience will look. We at Student Affairs have embarked on what we're calling a virtual continuity effort. What it will enable us to do is to deal with the fluid nature of COVID-19 and the various ways in which we might be asked to change the way in which our campus is structured and our work is played out. As you know, it's very possible that through an increase in the number of folks on campus who may come down with COVID-19, we may be forced to vote, to move to a different design on campus. And so what you have here is our attempt to ensure that all students will have the same level of potential engagement around their student experience. So we've identified three different engagement levels. The first engagement level really allows us to have our programming at either posted maximum capacities or the full capacity that rooms and spaces have been able to allow to take place in the past. So for example, if we're talking about an event that may take place in the ballroom, if the ballroom capacity is two-hundred-and-fifty, under engagement level one, if we are at a place where we can allow full engagement, we are able to allow for an event to take place with two-hundred-and-fifty participants. If, within the same context, there's a reduction in the level of or the number of people who can be in that event, we will create and manage that program correspondingly. So if we reduce it to a hundred participants, we believe that at that point and still being in level one, if we believe that we can accommodate only up to a hundred participants, we will still have that event at that maximum capacity. When we move to engagement level two, it is a reflection of the fact that we believe that our campus is being pushed closer to its limits, closer to its capacity around being able to respond to the fluid nature again of COVID-19. There, as we do now, we have a maximum capacity of ten. So the gathering size for any event in student experience, when the maximum is ten, will be ten. That goes from meetings for organizations to general organized gatherings and events. There's a fluid space between the yellow and the red. So for example, when we maximize our attendance to an event to ten, it will automatically be virtual. The rest of the attendees to that event will participate in that event virtually. At our most extreme level is, as you see in red here, engagement level three. That is when we determine that our environment is so challenged that it is best and safest for us to do all of our student experience events as well as the delivery of our support services in the virtual realm. So again, we have this kind of fluid, organized way of providing both our student programming and our support. And it will change based upon our read of the reality of our environment and our sense of how safe we would be in any one of these designs. So this is how it might look. For an event that, say, Cab might host their cab open house, which normally might have a hundred attendees, excuse me. Under engagement level one, if hosted in the MSC Grand Ballroom, attendance will be based upon that posted room capacity. So theoretically, if it took place in the ballroom, the entire, the event would be allowed to host all of those who might be in attendance. Say, for that same event, if we were in engagement level two, Eboard might meet in MSC Senate Chambers to record open house and attendees log in via Zoom. So you can see this mixture, right? And we are able at that point to have some people to be present during that same event, while the rest would be able to attend in this platform being Zoom. If we are engagement level three, the entire event would happen in Zoom. What we have done across Student Affairs, as you can see by this example, is taken all of our major events and our signature events and mapped out how that event might play out based upon engagement level one, engagement level two, or engagement level three. And what you see on this slide is this a small subset of examples of how programs might play out across the three engagement levels. I'll leave this slide there so you can look at it, and then I'll move on to the next slide. Some other things that we are doing to adjust for this fall around both the student experience and our delivery of support for students include we're moving the administrative and support functions online and virtual so that everything that you have been used to receiving face-to-face, depending on the engagement level, you will be able to receive one-hundred percent of those services again, and experiences in either the online and/or virtual setting. In health services and counseling services, we have already, we began in the spring and expect to continue this fall and throughout the entire academic year. We have moved to a telemed design as well as telecounseling so that we are able to respond to the range of needs of our students in both of those platforms. That is to say that you no longer necessarily have to go to the health center to get full medical service as well as to the counseling center to get counseling center. This will not supplant or fully replace in-person services, but it is designed to augment in-person services. We are working on a conduct protocol, and I'll actually speak to that in a moment, particularly around the use of PPE, and I'll highlight that again in a second with a slide. Hilltop Reserve, where you, as you know, you can receive emergency funding, food stuff, clothing, as well as services will still be in full effect, both physically as well as virtually. It will entail making an appointment so that we can manage the flow of people who are coming into the Hilltop Reserve. It is the case that when you arrive, both health services, counseling, excuse me, health services and Hilltop Reserve will not be in the health center. They will actually be in Hobart-Taylor. We are having some construction done to better accommodate our students in Franklin Owens, and that will not conclude until the end of the fall semester. So again, to receive health services and as well as use the facilities in the Hilltop Reserve, you'll have to go to Hobart-Taylor beginning this fall. We are bringing on a case management feature. What we already recognize as a new challenge as a function of COVID-19 is that there are a variety of challenges that we were not equipped to deal with even last spring, last fall, excuse me. And so in order to more fully be able to respond to the range of challenges that our students are having, we are instituting a case management design that allows us to not only capture, but to identify the appropriate services both on campus as well as off-campus, off-campus, excuse me, that will help our students. So you should be able to see that coming online when you walk on campus in the fall. We are creating a student ambassadors program to help students make the adjustments to COVID-19 and the corresponding changes. This will be your peers walking around campus, helping and reminding you to wear your mask. If you don't have a mask, helping you to find a mask and being able to function as a resource to answer the range of questions that you may have as we shift in our environment here on campus. And we are in Student Affairs also training our staff to better deal with the interplay between the fluid nature of COVID-19 and the increased range of challenges that you, our students, are bringing to campus. That's just some of the adjustments we're making. Let me talk for a moment about what's happening or what you can expect to happen in the residential experience. As you would well expect, we are going to have a staggered move-in this fall. This is designed to avoid physical contact between two people who may be going into the same space or generally into the same area. We will have moving to take place over a three-day period, and you will be told which day you should move in. So again, so as not to have you move in while someone else is moving into the same space. We have created and will fine-tune a quarantine protocol and isolation protocol. You will get more information about that within the coming weeks, and it will apply to those folks who are living on campus. We are creating a disinfecting protocol. You will have posters in your room, literature in your room that will help you identify the best way to keep your space not only clean but sanitized. We will be posting sanitizing stations and personal protection equipment requirements throughout the residential space. We are going to do some adjustment to room checks, and those adjustment will include making sure that you are keeping your rooms not just clean, but also sanitized. We will be posting spatialization guidelines throughout the student residence spaces, especially the common areas. To be clear, we will have to manage the way in which our common areas are used so that we do not violate our requirement for social distance. And we are creating a visitation protocol. Although it is not completed, suffice it to say that suffice it to say that you can expect that visitation will be significantly changed and adjusted to keep people safe as well as to adhere to social or physical distancing expectations. So let me talk a little bit about conduct. As you've already heard, we will have a requirement for the use of masks on campus, not just for students, but for anyone who is on campus. That does include our residents. Masks will be required on campus in all academic settings, public spaces, outdoor engagements, as well as when visiting people in their residential settings. On both main, excuse me, on main campus, northwest as well as nursing. At all university sponsored events, both on and off campus, including outdoor events in your residential spaces as well as in the common spaces. And anytime you are interacting with someone else. That is to say that when you move into a conversation with someone else, you are to first put on your mask before you enter into that conversation, both in your residential setting as well as around the campus. We have created sanction and will be instituting those sanctions around this requirement. And I think it is fair to be, to say that we should all be clear that this requirement is really, really important. It reflects our collective obligation to do our part to maintain as much as possible a safe environment across campus. And with that, we are going to be very strict on these set of rules and expectations among our students. You will be taken and I'll show you a slide referencing it. You will be required to before you come on campus this fall, required to take a video certification that will be an educational around how to maintain safety on campus in a COVID nineteen environment. Within that certification, you will have, you will see the new conduct sanction and the conduct protocol. That will function as your first warning. When you take the certification, the training before you arrive on campus, you will verify that you understand that that training functions as your first warning around the expectation that everywhere you go, especially in public places, you are expected to wear your mask. That's your first warning. The first time you are found to be without a mask, the sanction will be deferred suspension. Deferred suspension means that you will be allowed to complete that semester, but the following subsequent semester you are suspended. You can see below that the process. It will include an incident report review, a mandatory education and a recertification and a final warning this, at this point, meaning that a second time that you are found to not have your mask on in a public space, you will be immediately suspended after your review. The first time without a mask, you will have a deferred suspension. The second time without a mask, you will be suspended immediately from campus. Okay? I'll let you look at that so that that can sink in. Oops, sorry. Okay? Let me talk for a few moments about the training and certification that I alluded to. It is a, it is a certification process that entails approximately twenty-five slides that cover the range of these items here on this slide and a couple of other items. You will talk about social distancing in terms of what you will be trained on, social distancing and what that entails, what the expectations are for you across the campus. You will hear about what it means for buildings to have been modified, entrances identified for you to enter and exits for you, for identified for you to exit. You will understand, excuse me, why we are asking you to connect virtually for those services that you are used to simply showing up to an office to receive. That conversation will familiarize you with the numbers that are on doors that clearly illustrate the number of people that can be in that space. Every room across the campus will have a number. And what we are hoping is that everyone will before they enter a space, read the number, count the number of people in that room. And if, if they, if the number exceeds the number of people in that room, not go in. Okay, we are really serious about maintaining physical distancing during this period. The certification will also talk about cleaning and disinfecting, disinfecting as well as how frequently to do that. So we will teach you how to do that in your personal spaces as well as the importance of, uh, the underscoring of the importance of protecting others, including wearing a mask. So you can expect that the training that is required of every student before they attend classes this fall will touch on all of these items in addition to other items. I'm now going to ask Dr. Palmer to talk about safety preparations that we're making for the fall.
Okay. So a lot of this we've actually kind of touched on in some form or fashion, but uh, it's worth reiterating and, and keeping all of these things together under one rubric. Uh, we in fact will be posting occupancy signs all over campus. Uh, physical distancing guidelines will be, we will be followed and we'll have sanitizing and required face mask usage signs across campus. Uh, if you've been here this summer, you've seen those signs across campus. As you come into uh, uh, the gates at Prairie View, you, you've seen those signs saying mask required. And we are uh, making sure that all of the staff, faculty and students in fact uh, will have access to a face mask upon entry. We're going to reduce and redirect accessibility to classrooms as I mentioned. Uh, so when you enter a, a building, uh, you may, might only enter one uh, one area and exit out of another. We, we won't go back and forth so that we can limit the amount of contact among us. Uh, we are in fact moving business operations online or virtual uh, more and more and uh, creating procedures for organizing and managing large events. Uh, as, as you heard, uh, Dr. Sam's mentioned just now. Uh, we are in fact creating uh, protocols for athletics games uh, that adhere to CDC guidelines as well. Uh, this does uh, include limitations on uh, uh, space between, between individuals in those athletic events. Uh, we will not in fact have banned activities. Uh, we will not have the band on, on the fields and things like that. Uh, we will be adjusting transportation schedules and routes uh, to accommodate the movement and restrictions uh, and of course, access to food and groceries uh, as part of that. Dr. Sam, do you want to advance that for me? All right. Uh, in terms of managing COVID nineteen transmission, uh, as I mentioned, we're securing cloth face masks for everyone complimentary uh, to all students, faculty and staff. Uh, we're placing sanitizing and paper face mask stations throughout campus as well. Uh, so if you forget that face mask, uh, there will be some available to you. Uh, we are posting sneeze, sneeze guards across campus. Uh, we are establishing cleaning protocols for public spaces and those uh, areas that are high trafficked, especially continually. Uh, MSC of course is, is one of those uh, main places where, where we gather. Uh, we're creating a test, uh, a student testing program and university contact tracing program. And more on that will be uh, revealed as, as it becomes more clear to us uh, in the next week or so. Uh, but we are going to provide testing on campus. Uh, and more on that will, will come. Training and education preparations include creating a, a return to campus safety training program for all students. Uh, creating a weekly COVID nineteen symptom free certification process. And I know that we're focusing on students here, but this will be, be extended to faculty, staff and students. And uh, creating more social media uh, education models uh, to ensure that this is continually on our mind, that we continually think about uh, the safety of ourselves and the safety of others uh, as we go through this learning process in the fall. Dr. Willis, do you want to talk about the CARES Act and give us an update on that?
I do, but before I do, I want to go back to um, some information I shared about the types of classes. I wanted to be clear that um, when you're looking at the schedule on the online classes about whether they're synchronous or asynchronous, the way that you would know that a class is synchronous is it will say that it's an internet online class, but it will also have a day and a time that you would actually meet. If it just says online and it doesn't have a time and day, that means it's an asynchronous class that's going to just be offered and you'll do it. Um, you won't necessarily be online at the same time as your instructor. If it's synchronous on the schedule, it'll say that it's an internet class, but it will also have a time and a day. And I didn't clarify that when I shared those definitions. So I just wanted to clarify that. Um, I wanted to give you an update on where we are with the CARES Act. Um, we are, I didn't put this on the slide, but we are closing out some of the spring at this time for people that we needed to get FAFSA's for to um, to uh, verify your eligibility. And so those will be closed out this week. Um, and emails sent are dispersments made. For the Summer CARES Act, we've done one round of application and that was for people that we knew were registered at the beginning of the semester, whether you were in a ten week uh, or a five week. We have sent the link out today to students who are um, registered for a second five weeks only. Some of you may have gotten a duplicate and should have gotten an email right behind that. This current application, for those of you who were second five weeks only, um, will close next Tuesday on July twenty-first. So uh, make sure that you get that application in for summer. We are currently in the review process for all the summer applications. Dispersments are scheduled to begin on Monday. Um, however, if we get some early, we will try and start dispersing those early. As far as the Fall CARES Act application process, um, the application will be a link on the website again because of the number of students who are going to qualify. It will open on August tenth on the CARES Act website and it will close on August twenty-sixth. The uh, review team will be review, begin reviewing on August thirty-first and no dispersments will start until September twenty-second. What that means is if you are relying on these funds to help you pay your bill, your tuition bill, you will need to make arrangements for that first payment because this money will come after um, the drop. There is, it is not guaranteed. One of the, the requirement to receive these CARES Act is that you have to have had an expense that you incurred because of the disruption to campus operations that happened um, because of COVID nineteen. And so for example, those of you who were student workers and you were working on campus and then um, we closed the campus and you could no longer work. So now you don't have the funds to pay your rent or to pay your bill or you had to buy a computer because we went online. Or um, a lot of you got refunds um, because you had to move out of the dorms or you had to buy new software. Those are things that are considered a disruption to campus operations and therefore cause you an expense. Um, I've gotten a lot of emails with questions about that and the directions to us from the federal government were very clear about what we can and cannot award this money for. Um, and so we will continue that process until we have dispersed all of the funds that we can to everyone who is eligible. Uh, if you have any questions, feel free to email me or to email um, us at pvcares@pvamu.edu.
It's jammed again. I'm trying to move it.
Tim, while we're waiting, can I just uh, answer a couple of things?
Yes, you can. Are these coming out of the chat box?
I've just kind of been watching um, Q and A and there are a lot of questions about um, why we are um, even bringing students back face to face. We recognize that the numbers are still increasing um, all over the state of Texas and, and across the country. Uh, this is currently the plan. Um, we, as far as the course offerings and the questions about students wanting to have all online classes and is there an option for you to be able to choose how you learn? The, the decision-making behind how we're doing that is we are limited in the number of faculty. And so we can't have at this time all, an option for every offering. Uh, but we are constantly, the provost and the team that he's working with is constantly watching and um, thinking about multiple plans. And I think if you just, he, the provost will continue to update us on where we are. But that's, that's why it's not that um, we don't understand that everyone, we want to keep everyone safe, the staff, the faculty and the students. And we recognize that you all um, have a lot of questions. I think even on campus now, we have questions too, but this is a constant moving target that um, the team really is doing uh, monitoring and making adjustments as we go. I don't know, Dr. Palmer, if you want to add a little bit more, but that's one of the questions that I'm seeing um, a lot.
Yeah, I, I think there's some questions about uh, the, the schedule. Uh, we, we intended to release the updated schedule on July tenth, which was Friday of last week. But because of the evolving nature of the, the pandemic and the increase in cases, we actually saw some, some changes from face-to-face coursework uh, to the online environment. And so we didn't feel that it was uh, appropriate at this juncture to release something that is still a little bit premature. Uh, we, we finalized a lot of those course uh, changes and conversions as we speak. And I think uh, you know, if all goes well, we can actually release this on Friday or Monday of next week. Uh, perhaps the middle of next week uh, at the latest. Uh, but as Dr. Dr. Willis mentioned, uh, if you're looking at your schedule now and you're trying to figure out, uh, is my course synchronous or asynchronous online? Uh, you'll, you, you can tell that by looking at whether there's a time uh, and a, a location assigned to it.
Dr. Willis, did you need this slide here?
I kind of jumped ahead and talked about it. Um, requirements continue to, to be the same for the CARES Act. Um, you have to be Title IV eligible. Um, you cannot be enrolled in a fully online program. You can be in all online courses, but you cannot be in a fully online program. And we only have um, the Juvenile Justice Program that qualifies for that. And then for summer and for fall, whether you are receiving or um, accepting financial aid or not, you have to have a twenty nineteen or um, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty or a twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one FAFSA on file. If you do not, you will not be approved for um, the funds. And the website is the same as it has been. If you go on the homepage, you can click into the CARES Act website and all of the requirements are there.
So we realize that there are still some remaining items that may be top of mind for you. We still are dealing, as you can see, with the adjustments to the instructional space. We are clarifying our approach to testing with the goal of testing everyone on campus who wishes to be tested. We are refining our contact tracing approach. For those who don't know, contact tracing is the process of identifying all of those who have been in contact with a person who has, or is imminent that it's being identified that a person has COVID-19. And what you have to do after you identify those people is to ask them to isolate. We are refining our process for doing that, as well as refining the process for PPE distribution. Going back to the conduct, discussed part of the conversation around face masks. We do not want to be punitive, but we do want everyone on campus to be able to wear face masks. And we are making provisions for those who find themselves without face masks to ensure that every person on campus can have those. So within the coming weeks, you will see more information on our website about these four items and anything else pertaining to preparing for fall return. There's one other item that we did not get to, and that is for our international students. We had heard recently from our federal government an effort to not allow those students who are international students to be enrolled if they took all courses online. Just a few hours ago, we heard an announcement that they may be going back against that original expectation. So shortly, we will have greater clarification on whether or not we have to concern ourselves with international students having the right mix of courses to ensure that they can be fully enrolled this coming fall. But it seems right now that there's some backtracking on that, and we're very happy to hear that. So there are a number of questions that we have coming through our chat, and we're going to spend a few moments addressing some of those questions. I just want to make sure, Dr. Palmer and Dr. Willis, can you see these questions in the chat box as well?
Yes.
Okay. Let me see, I'll tackle the first question, and the question comes, what provisions are in place for out-of-state students? What, what we don't want to do is come unpack, get items out of storage to only be told a month later, you are shutting down and students need to go home. What you're really concerned about is the fluid nature of this situation, and it is inconvenience, an inconvenience for everyone. Unfortunately, it is very difficult to answer your question in terms of what we would do if we are forced to shut down. But I think past, the past is prologue here. Whereas we made adjustments and accommodations for those students who lived on campus from a storage standpoint, we will do the same exact thing. And anything we think is necessary to make the transition, if we had, if we were forced to move off campus, to make that transition as easy as possible. It is really difficult on the face of your question to give an answer, you know, that really responds to every part of, you know, the kinds of concerns that an out-of-student, out-of-state student might have. But you can rest assured that we'll do our level best to try to make it that transition easy for you. We're clear that for as many people, we have students who are on the other side of the country. It is difficult to just shut down, pack up, and to return home. And then in that case, continue your courses online. We're well aware of that, and we're going to continue to make that transition for you as easy as possible. Dr. Willis, you might be able to answer that next question there.
If you will jump to another one, I am getting an answer to one of them.
So there's a question about what to do with nursing registration or changing registration in nursing. So as most nurses know, there is a very prescriptive set of courses that you have to take in a certain order and what have you. What this means is that you need to work with your advisors in the College of Nursing for those. They were in fact making some changes to the schedule in the last week. So those will be kind of revealed or disclosed in Panther tracks at the same time that others are. And some changes might need to be made, you know, based on the options that are available to students at that time.
We have a question here for those students, for those of us whose classes are strictly online. If those fees are waived until, are waived, will we still be able to use these resources? The answer is no. There are fees for those resources. And if you wish to pay those fees, we'll figure out a way for you to get those fees, to be able to pay the fees so that you can utilize those fees. But the idea is that if you are all, if all of your classes are online, you are not on campus where those services are. But what we'll do, Palmer, can we agree to go find a cleaner answer that speaks to those students who may be all online, yet want to avail themselves of the services on campus?
Absolutely.
Let's get it.
And in fact, I think we need to clarify whether they can actually live on campus as well. So that should, one should know.
I can clarify that piece. For a student who has all her, his classes online, they are able to live on campus. Is that what you're asking, Dr. Palmer?
And so that was the point, yes. And coming up with the additional fees, if that is the case, to have access to all of the amenities that those fees provide would be an option.
Right, absolutely.
And so I heard Dr. Palmer answer the question about the College of Nursing, that's what I was confirming. But one of the questions is, will there be any type of tuition reduction? We currently have two different structures based on the course type. And there is not, at this time, any discussion about a reduction in tuition. If you are in online classes, you are not, completely online classes, you are not charged those fees because the assumption is that you would not be on campus and need to access those services. But every other fee and the tuition would remain the same because you're able to receive the same services that you would normal face-to-face if the open. So there is not a reduction in tuition. For students who are out of state and completely online, you won't have to pay those fees that I referred to earlier. And that's a couple of the questions that are consistent and very similar.
Let's expand on that just a little bit, Dr. Willis. About out-of-state students taking purely online courses has come up quite a bit in the chat box and question. Essentially, the state of Texas, like, like other states, require that you pay the state tuition in the, in the area from, for which you actually pay taxes. So if you're a state resident, you pay state taxes to the state of Texas. If you're not, then you pay it to another state. So it is a statutory requirement that we charge out-of-state tuition, regardless of mode of delivery, if you're taking courses with a university in the state of Texas. So unfortunately, because of the mode of delivery, that does not change. What does change, however, is what Dr. Willis mentioned, which is the fees that would be charged. So you would not be charged those particular fees.
Dr. Sams, I don't know if you see this one, but there's one that says, are you requiring students returning to campus to test for the virus before making their return? If not, why hasn't this idea been considered? I don't know if you or Dr.
I spoke to that when I mentioned that there are some remaining items that we are going to clarify. Testing is one.
Okay. There's another question that says, when will students see the indication of their classes being online in their registration? Dr. Palmer kind of addressed that when he said, we are still making some changes. And by next week, you should be able to see your schedule and how each course is being offered.
Will tuition, housing, et cetera, be prorated for students? Let me speak to housing specifically. You entered into a housing lease, and what that means is that you are responsible for the fees for housing for the duration of that lease. If the, the only exception where you are able to get out of on-campus housing lease is if you are no longer enrolled in school. If the school shuts down, we will make a determination and deal with that issue, deal with that issue at that point. To directly answer the question, right now, there is no pro, there is no decision about prorated refunds for students with regard to housing. It will be dealt with at the moment at which we determine, if we ever are forced to determine, that we will close housing.
There's a question, hello, I'm a student athlete. What happens if one of our teammates tests positive? Will the entire team be quarantined since we are around them, and if so, where will you keep us?
So there is a plan developed right now by athletics and an ongoing plan. I think they're getting some guidance from NCAA, from the SWAC as well in that regard. We are making tests available from the A&amp;M system, and we are in fact making purchases for tests to make sure that we can have something available when it's needed. So more, more of that will come, and that's what Dr. Sams mentioned when he said, some items remain. On that last slide, some items remain, and that's about the testing. And probably in the next two weeks, we'll have a full picture of what that will look like, what the, the volume of testing will be available to us, and also how the testing will take place. But we are in fact providing tests and making provisions for such.
There's a question here, if a student has an underlying medical condition and does not feel comfortable returning to campus considering the high number of COVID cases in Texas, will the student be allowed to opt for strictly online courses for fall and return in the spring? Yes, absolutely. Any student having that concern, please contact us, and we will make sure that you're getting the right advisement. We do not want students to feel like they have to be on campus, especially if they have underlying medical conditions.
And then there's a question, will professors be required to use e-courses? And how will their competency on e-courses be ensured before classes begin?
So we are ensuring that faculty go through training this summer. Some of the faculty that you've had in the past are already E-certified instructors. And they in fact have piloted with in the spring and/or, of course, in the summer. We are making sure that faculty have the resources they need to be able to offer courses remotely or online fully. We are actually hiring some additional instructors to support faculty and colleges so that if we need to provide that support inside the classroom to record video lectures and help post them online, that, that will be available to you as well.
If a student has face-to-face and or hybrid, will showing up to the course be mandatory? Some are still uncomfortable, even with a mask, especially for people who get financial aid, this is crucial. You want to do that, Dr. Palmer, I mean?
So our definition of a hybrid class is that 51% or more of the class is actually meeting face-to-face. I think this environment, there has to be some type of flexibility. And in fact, because of social distancing, I did mention that there might be cases where, you know, a larger class is actually divided into two, for example, and you're meeting on a Monday, and then the other set of students are meeting on a Wednesday, and the other set are meeting on a Friday with synchronous Zoom sessions. So you might be at home during that session, interacting with students who are actually physically in the classroom at that point. So we certainly want the face-to-face interaction to be there in a properly socially-distanced manner, in a safe and secure one. But universities pride ourselves on, on that face-to-face interaction, and that's in some ways where a lot of the learning takes place, right? That is a casual encounter on a, on a particular topic that is being raised in the classroom can be quite informative and quite important as well. So we do want a hybrid course to, to have that face-to-face component as well. But there will be flexibility.
Okay. Why are there so many cases coming from the campus? Is this from PV, or are you notifying that they may have exposed, been exposed to the virus to the university? You're muted, Tim.
Sorry, the issue about there being so many cases is just a function of our doing our due diligence and announcing all that we get that come through the door that are deserving, that meet our requirements for announcement. We are in the Houston area, and I think everyone knows that Houston is quickly becoming one of the national hotspots. And I think that the increase in cases that we're noticing is a reflection of our being in the immediate Houston area. I don't know that it has anything to do with PV. Let me see, is this from PV, or are you notifying that they must have, they may have exposed the virus to the school? No, it is that many of our people live in the region, and the region is quickly becoming a national hotspot.
And then what happens if they shut down the state again?
You want that, Palmer, or you want me to try it?
Yeah, go ahead, and then I'll follow up as well.
Well, we have and are crafting a set of kind of phased responses to, again, the fluid reality that we find ourselves in. And one of those scenarios involves if the state shuts down. If the, if the state shuts, shuts down, we may be looking very similarly to what we had to deal with in the spring. If the state shuts down, we may move all of our classes to online. We will make adaptations within our residential platform because, let me remind you, not everyone is able to leave the campus immediately. And we're going to make sure that we accommodate the needs of those students who have to stay on campus and make sure that they're safe and able to continue with their coursework. So the answer to that is, it really depends on not just the nature of the shutdown, but the kind of challenges that we face at that moment. We, chances are, we'll move to online, but we will make sure that those students who are in residence, who are forced to continue to stay in residence on campus, will be accommodated.
Yeah, I'll just echo that last part, which is when, when the state went to remote work or shut down, as you, as you put it, we did not close the dorms. Students were in fact encouraged to go home, but we did not shut down. And in fact, we had quite a few students remaining on campus. So those, those support mechanisms will remain in place as they did in the, in the spring. But coursework would move online, just as we did in March. And I think in large part, we have learned a great deal about what remote learning is and the online environment and all of those challenges. We've in fact probably purchased over 1,000 computers and laptops just to be prepared for something like that, not only for, for students, but also for faculty. And so if that does happen, we will be more prepared than we were when it, when it happened in March. But hopefully it does not, and
I want to address something before I ask Dr. Sams to address something. I got a side message. I want to confirm that any student who has received CARES funding in the spring may also still receive CARES funding in the summer or fall if you continue to have expenses that you incurred as a result of the disruption to campus operations. So you could potentially receive up to $3,000 of CARES funding between the three semesters. And then, Dr. Sams, there's a lot of questions about the quarantine plan, wear protocol. If you can just address that a little bit more.
So our quarantine plan comes out of our health center, and it gets engaged once we identify someone who has COVID-19, who is living on campus. And I'm assuming that this question means quarantine for campus residents. I'm going to proceed with that. Once a student has been identified as having COVID-19, we have some 144 isolation spaces identified within our residential platform that we would utilize to that we would utilize to isolate that person and those persons who came in contact with that student. While that person is in isolation, we have a rigorous cleaning protocol that gets engaged as well as making sure that that student is able to eat. We will make sure that they will receive their three meals a day. And we will make sure that they will get the needed medical attention while they are isolated for that period of time. Above and beyond that, which is to say that medically, if they need to be hospitalized, we have a pro, our protocol involves the movement of that student from campus to the hospital. There is another question about testing again, that will come forward, that will shortly.
See some questions about lab classes and lab, lab equipment and things like that. We have in fact gathered a list together from various deans offering lab courses. And we are making provisions to actually buy particular types of software for lab offerings that would be hybrid or virtual. And we'll make those provisions known as we get closer to the fall semester. I think our goal is actually to put out a weekly communication from henceforth so that we can share all the updates that we know at, at that juncture. So that, you know, you can make a, an informed decision on whether to change one course from a hybrid model to a, a face-to-face model or vice versa. And so that you understand exactly what your experience will be in the classroom as you interact with your, your fellow students and also with faculty. But we do intend to provide PPE for every student in, in the, the lab environment and to make sure that things are protected for you.
There are two questions I'll take. Will we be required to move off campus during Thanksgiving break? No, you have a lease for the entire duration of your time here on campus. If you do not leave during Thanksgiving break, we cannot make you leave during Thanksgiving break. You have a lease for your apartment. If you are self-isolated during quarantine, how do you eat? We make provisions for bringing you food as well as cleaning of your clothing.
There's a question, what determines the close of campus if many students, professors test positive?
Yeah, I think that second one is a separate question.
Is that, you're going to go ahead, Dr. Sam's?
Well, we're working on that protocol, but the determination has to do with fundamentally the impact of professors testing positive and any, and quite frankly, the number of students testing positive, the impact that it would have on the environment. We're going to continue to respond to the reality on the ground as well as the external environment to make the safest determination for our community. And so whereas, I want to make sure, the person couched the question within the context of closing the campus, it may not be that the reality on the ground or in the immediate environment warrants or justifies the closure of the campus. It may be that we may estimate some major adjustments to something on campus that will restrict movement, ensure even greater distancing or anything in between. So we are poised to again, deal with the dynamic environment that exists on campus and in the immediate environment. So the first response will not always be closure. The first response may be erasure of maximums and safe clothing of max, of closure of, of spaces on campus, going to a different dining format, changing the way in which we're programming. We can certainly have more online classes. So I don't want anyone to think that, that the go-to is always closure. The go-to is moving in a direction that ensures that we are safe as possible while maintaining and adhering to our educational mission here on campus.
Okay, then Dr. Sam's, how will the MSC bowling alley, et cetera dining work?
That's being worked out right now. That goes back to what I spoke to earlier in terms of the programming design. It depends on what phase we are in. If we are in a green phase, I think you know that we will be able to move anywhere from the minimum of 10 towards the maximum, the usual maximum. If we're in the yellow phase, we will strictly adhere to 10 people in a space or below. If we're in the red phase, we will enter a virtual phase. It really depends on what phase we are in.
Okay, if my student's housing has been paid, but all classes have been changed to virtual, does she have the option to not come on campus in fall? However, will the room accommodation be held for the spring?
The lease is for the entire year, so the answer is yes.
Okay, will there be any restrictions on off-campus travel?
Restriction is an interesting word. We will be strongly, strongly, strongly encouraging students not to leave campus. Every time you leave campus, you open the possibility of getting the virus and bringing it back to one of your, your peers or one of our community members. But we will be strongly encouraging students to stay on campus until Thanksgiving.
Dr. Palmer, I think you can address this. I may have missed this, but will band activities be limited, traveling, performing, et cetera?
I believe Dr. Zachary and his team have actually started having meetings with the band on this to share the plan. We have decided that we would not invite other bands to campus to perform during halftime shows. We've decided that we would not send our band outside of Prairie View either. We will not have the, the typical summer band camp as we normally do with a band of 400 students. That's a lot to, to accommodate and ensure social distancing. So we've decided not to, to hold that this summer. And so we will not be performing in the traditional sense that we, we have come to expect at, at games and things like that. If we do perform, it could be virtual. It could also be in smaller groups. If, if football games are held in the stadium, for example, you might have a, a smaller group of, of the band dispersed around the stadium itself or smaller groups.
Okay, um, who do we contact about medical conditions?
The health center. You can go on the health center's website, the phone number is there. Keep in mind, we also have telemed and many people have really liked and even preferred that method of, of receiving services. The health center and if it's a COVID-19 related kind of question, you can go to the COVID-19 website.
The current deadline to apply for spring semester of nursing school is September 1st. Will that date possibly be extended due to the current situation?
So I am not sure about that. Doctor, we'll need to talk with Dr. Adams, the dean of that area.
Okay, the next question says, I understand all of this is new for everyone. However, what will be the accessibility to the students in a remote environment? Will there be a required response turnaround time for the instructor? How will this look?
I, I think Dr. Sam's mentioned some of this in what he presented earlier. That is, we want to ensure that there is accessibility, that, that you have access to a lot of the services that you have come to expect. One of those that I mentioned was tutoring as an example. Every student on campus has access to at least 500 minutes on, on tutoring. And we can actually extend that further. There, there are other, other things that, Dr. Sam's, you might mention in terms of access, but certainly the, the library services, tutor services, advising would still be available. And so you can certainly talk with a counselor as well. And I think we're making provisions for as much as we can inside of the health center for additional conversations for those who might need telemedicine or, you know, tele, tele discussion, if you will, about health. And Tim, you might want to talk about that.
What I will add is any person having any question, if you look on our website, you will see in the bottom right, a chat box icon. You can pose any question in that chat box about the services you may need, who should you talk to? Or you can simply ask a question similar to the one you're asking in this format. And folks stand behind there and are prepared to answer those questions. But suffice it to say that across the institution, almost every office has already made a pivot and adjustment to kind of responding virtually or online. Keep in mind that it is in our mind, given the, the, what we know and don't know about COVID-19, the safest way to receive your services right now would be through online and through the virtual format. We don't want people going in and out. At every, keep in mind, every contact raises the risk. And you can, as, as far as we're thinking at this point, it is the case that most of the services that you're speaking, you can receive virtually. Some of you may have seen me smile, someone asked a question, so do we really have to come to school this fall? I think that that was the question, am I correct?
It was.
Yeah, yeah, that was a funny question. The answer is it depends on what profile of courses you're taking. If you're online, the answer is no. If you're online and you have housing, the answer is you still have to come to your housing. Is that a succinct answer for you?
And then following that, it says, so if all of our classes are online and we are on campus residents, will there be a certain payments that are waived because of this or what? As we said before, if you are in all online classes, it doesn't matter whether you are staying on campus or off-campus, you will have the fees waived that are the rec center, the health center, athletic fee and the student center fees.
Well, but we are going to go back, we made a promise, I think you were dealing with another question. Both Palmer and I made a promise to go deal with the question for those who want to use the fees and for those who are on campus.
Oh, yes.
Because if you're on campus, you're going to be using the fees. The services, right.
Will there be Panther Camp?
Yes. There will be Panther Camp. Will it look like it looked in the past? I think we all know the answer is no to that. Very little will look like it has looked in the past, but we are going to have Panther Camp.
Okay, it says, okay, so when is Thanksgiving break and Christmas? We can't go home with our family. After Thanksgiving break, all classes will go online. So you will be able to leave after Thanksgiving and not have to come back, even if you were in a face-to-face or a hybrid class. So you will be able to be home with your family for those days.
Let me just add that the, the reason that we're doing this is that we want to limit the traffic that kind of comes in and out of, out of campus. So if we have a, a lot of students going off to, to visit family and friends during that Thanksgiving break, but they could stay home rather than come back and interact with fellow students and faculty and staff, that's probably a safe option. And so that's, that's the rationale for moving everything online after February, November 24th or whatever that date is, that Tuesday.
Dr. Sam's or Dr. Palmer, has there been a set disaster plan developed in case an outbreak on campus occurs? Are we letting exposed students go back to their homes? Will they be required to quarantine in their dorms and, or how will this be addressed?
So I think we addressed many elements of this question and at, at various points throughout our conversation. The first, the, the first part of the question, yes, we have a plan that is under, that we are crafting and refining as we speak. And it is a phased plan to deal with the reality, the fluid nature of this. The person here calls it a disaster plan. We call it something else, but it fundamentally responds to the reality on the ground and in the surrounding environment. And we will adjust accordingly. And that does include outbreak, potential outbreak on campus. Are we letting, allowing exposed students to go back to their homes? That is a choice of the exposed student. We cannot prevent anybody from going home. That's that, we can't prevent anyone from going home. For those students who stay on campus, I spoke to this earlier, we have 144 beds that are reserved and ready for isolation and quarantine. I think we will take maybe two or three more questions. Is that okay for the, our panelists?
Do College of Nursing students have to go to clinicals this fall? Do we have that answer yet, Dr. Palmer?
My understanding is that clinic will still be held, that there is in fact orientation about safety, both at the hospital setting or the clinical site setting as well as faculty and staff. I believe PPE has been provided as well. And so, you know, this is, this is part of the experience for a nursing practitioner, a, a health person, health diagnosis individual. So my understanding right now is that the, the clinicals will continue. That may change. I know that at some point in the spring semester, I believe there were some options for an incomplete so that there was options, some options to come back and actually finish clinicals in some other form or fashion. So we'll have to find out more information from Dr. Adams and the College of Nursing on that one. And we can post that on one of some of the FAQs that we have on the, the website.
Okay, there's a question, will the second CARES Act link being sent out again? I think that's referring to the summer link. And we have sent it out at this point to everyone who was registered. If you were in, at the beginning of the semester and did not apply, by the time we closed it, we won't be sending that out again for summer. You will be able to apply for fall when it opens in August. Is spring semester still scheduled to be completely online? If you're talking about spring 2021, we are not there to the development of that schedule at this time. I think the final question, go ahead, Dr. Palmer.
I, I think that there was some confusion about whether we were going fully online in the spring semester because of the date in the memo saying that following Thanksgiving break, everything would move online.
Oh, okay.
That was only referring to what we would do for the fall semester. And so, you know, we are likely to have a, a pretty robust set of options for students for the spring semester moving forward. I don't think that it'll be 90%, as we have, have, have had in the past, 90% face-to-face. I think we'll provide quite a few options for students. And that'll be a, a much more planned approach to a course offerings as we move forward in the spring. The other thing that we're offering additionally is mini-masters. And we have not done that in the past, but mini-masters will be available, likely four-week, three or four-week course sections. And those would be fully online as well. So if you wanted to make up a course or, or add an additional course between, between sessions, you can do that as well.
Dr. Sam's, do you want to talk a little bit about homecoming before we have to close this session?
Well, let me, let me address this, the, the one that is actually be low homecoming. The homecoming question. I'm being told that we have answered 252 questions over the last hour and a half. There are still some questions that remain and we are going to review the transcript for themes and questions and make sure that those answers, those questions are answered as well, online in the form of FAQ. So that is simply to say, if your question was not answered, what we are going to do is look at those questions and make sure that we answer them in the FAQs that are online. Okay, so we're going to get all of your questions. So the final question before us is the one that we probably have all been wondering about. And that is with homecoming. We have not determined what will happen with homecoming, other than to say that there will be a homecoming in some form. If you go back to what I spoke about in terms of our virtual continuity plan, you can see how we could easily plug in homecoming and think about how it would play out as it traditionally have in the green area, modified in the yellow, all virtual in the red. So that's what at this point, you should think about homecoming in terms of the possibilities. I think all of you know that there has been a survey sent out to students asking for their feedback. The deadline for that feedback is tomorrow. We're taking that feedback very seriously. We've sent the same survey. We've sent the same survey out to alumni, and we've received well over a thousand responses from our alumni body. And we will look at those responses, take them very seriously. Again, assess the environment, determine what is safest for our community, and make a determination. So if you want input on how homecoming plays out this fall, please answer that survey.
So we should, we should mention that this video will be placed on the web and that in fact PowerPoint presentation should also be placed there.
It will be placed up there as well. And again, any questions we were unable to get to, we put, we will answer those questions inside the FAQ. And I do want to thank everybody who was behind the scenes answering the flurry of questions. For us to be able to answer two hundred and fifty-two questions in an hour and a half is actually a tremendous feat. So they have been typing and cutting and pacing and working really hard behind the scenes because I hope you realize we really take your questions very seriously and take your concern about your safety and well-being very seriously. As you can also see, we've been working really hard preparing for the fall. And as you can tell, there's still yet a lot of work to be done. But we are going to be fully prepared and will do our level best to make sure that you have a safe, prosperous kind of fall this coming, this coming academic year. I want to thank everybody for spending the last hour and a half. I want to thank my fellow panelists, Dr. Willis and Dr. Palmer, for their wonderful answers to these very complex questions and issues. And thank you, everyone. Please stay safe. And we are excited to see you this coming fall. Thank you very much and take care.
Thank you. Bye.